Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. I need a motion to approve minutes from the December 10 meeting.
So moved?
Second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Uh, public communications. Alright, board communications. Um, the only thing I have is, um, there is an opening now on the V S B A board for a regional vice president. So if anyone has any interest, please either let me know or you can get in touch with V S B A.
Thanks.
There are monthly meetings. Um, okay, reports to the board. It looks like we have someone to introduce.
Yeah, um, everyone, this is our new junior rep, Tommy Lee Hadson. Um, I don't know if you guys want to go around and introduce yourselves for him?
Yes, I think that would be good.
Matt Webberly.
Lauren Martin, Ministry Assistant Superintendent.
Tom O'Brien, Superintendent.
Hey Tommy Lee.
Hi.
I'm Lori Ebitaske.
Chris Presto from Walton.
Chris Guzzano from Virgens.
Kurt Haggis from Ferrisburg.
Carrie Beebe from Patton.
I'm Kathy Cannon, I'm the business manager for the S U, and you probably know Nate.
Yes. Nice to meet you all, nice to be here.
And I assume Casey, I can, think I can trust Casey to fill you in on what?
Oh yeah.
Your duties and so forth.
Absolutely.
Feel free to ask questions at any time.
Yeah, you can take your.
Okay, so he's just gonna like sort of see how things work today and then be more involved later. Um, but just some things that are gonna be happening really soon, um, is this Saturday, actually, the seniors are hosting, um, the annual winter ball. It's gonna be from eight to eleven at the Opera House. Um, also, to note, the boys basketball team is undefeated, eleven and oh. Um, and Kathy just showed me this really great article, um, on the Free Press about how, it's titled Championship or Bust for the Virgens Boys Basketball Team.
Nice.
It looks really great, I haven't had a chance to read it yet, but it sounds awesome. And also, uh, just recently, the National Honor Society has teamed up with the hygiene committee to get the five guidelines, um, hygiene committee, it's really just the five guidelines committee, um, uh, work on getting banners, um, of the five guidelines to hang up around the school. Um, oh, and also the juniors, um, just wanted me to note that, uh, they've scheduled their prom. It's gonna be May 11th at the Champlain Valley Alpaca Farms Wedding Barn, um, which is in Bridgeport. Yeah, and I looked, I saw pictures, it looks really nice. And then, also, uh, seniors are gonna be starting the opus, open campus trial run, so to speak, um, Friday of the new semester. So that's pretty much all I've got.
Great, thank you.
What did the senior privileges end up being? Can you describe them for me?
Um, yeah, so it's, uh, basically, uh, we didn't change too much from what we presented. Um, yeah, I didn't think so. Um, it's just gonna be, uh, every Friday, or is it one Friday a month?
We're, we're gonna start with the first Friday.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
And, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna crawl before we walk. And, uh, and the, and the proposal is that we'll end up every Friday of the month, having an open campus for seniors during lunch. Uh, for all seniors except those who are in band, um, of course. Um, and then, I, also, we're loosening up some of the, uh, reporting, uh, requirements for, uh, callback. So if the seniors all caught up and doing fine, they don't have to, you know, check in at every callback with their, uh, morning meeting teacher, they can just say, this is where I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be in the library, they can't leave campus, of course, unless it's Friday, um, and...
Uh, we have our coffee hours on Thursdays.
Coffee hour on Thursdays in the morning. And then, uh, also, when the weather gets nice, seniors who are in good standing are gonna be able to eat outside at a couple picnic tables we're wrangling for, and, uh, in a nice place, not next to the dumpsters, so... Does that cover it?
Yeah, and the open campus is without cars, it's just walking.
It, it is without cars, yes.
I'm sorry, do you say the Friday week, or?
Uh, yeah, we're gonna start, um, the first Friday of, uh, the month and see how that goes, and hopefully it'll end up being every Friday.
You don't have too many Fridays to go there, so, yeah. Best of it.
Alright.
Um, I don't have a lot, I think it's, uh, interesting that we just, uh, one of the components of A Y P is, um, gradu- graduation rate, that's something that Arnie Duncan is pretty, um, serious about, and, uh, we, we had our preliminary finding for last year's, the 2012 graduation rate was, uh, ninety-three percent. Oh, there it is, it's ninety-three percent.
That's a good number.
That's a good number, uh, almost, I think everybody but one of the students that did not graduate is doing multiple-year accommodations, uh, through I E P. So if we take our, our six-year cohort, which is how special ed measures graduation rate, we would be much closer to ninety-eight point something percent, and I, I think that's what it is, ninety-eight point, I can't remember exactly, but that's a special, with special ed kicked in, because they have so many kids on five and six-year plans. So, uh, we're very proud of that, uh, a lot of work from the faculty. I think it's, it's, uh, a tribute to, uh, morning meeting and to callback system, and to some extent PB I S, and, uh, and the quality of teachers we have who reach out to keep kids here. So that's a good piece of news. We are also, uh, we have a lot of undertakings, I've already explained Green Mountain Star and what we're doing with that, uh, but teachers are soon going to be training in, uh, Rubicon Atlas, or Atlas Rubicon, uh, it's a, uh, a curriculum mapping software in which every teacher's got a, um, there's two elements of it, one is the plan, um, the curriculum plan, which will go in there, and the other one is the curriculum diary of what actually happens, uh, from these lessons and individual, um, lessons within the unit. Uh, so we're gonna have to have professional development to be able to get everybody on board, and it's going to be, basically, it's gonna be, take our understanding by design, uh, practice, which is how we construct units anyway at the high school, and it's gonna make it a, a living document. The advantage, and the really good thing about it, is that if you have two teachers teaching, for instance, uh, earth science, alright, earth and space science, the, the, they have to have common curriculum maps for that one course, and so it's gonna be a way of, of unifying and homogenizing, um, without taking away the individualization of the instruction, but it's gonna guarantee some equity between and amongst teachers. So, we're pretty excited about it, it sounds like pretty dreadful, uh, work, actually, but it's, it's gonna yield really, really good results, we're very happy with it. Peter?
Report.
Good timing.
Um, we have, middle school has been invited to present, um, a panel of middle school kids at the, um, the renewal of the Vermont Association for Middle Level Education Conference in, uh, the end of March, March 29th, up at U V M. Uh, they're listed as one of the four presenters, uh, talking about speaking up, how student voice changes school culture. It'll be based on our behavior, um, protocol plans, um, so I will be taking probably four kids, uh, up for that. We're the only, uh, let's see, there's an author and, uh, a couple of other speakers, Vermont Human Rights Commission, but we're the only student group that's been invited, so, um, that's the news.
That's...
Is that it? Want more? I have one more, a little piece. Um, and just, just so for everybody's aware, uh, we have been a testing site for the, uh, S A T and the P S A T, well, P S A T we are, that's an internal thing, but the S A T and the A C T tests, uh, our, our testing person is retiring, stepping down, he stayed an extra year for us. Um, so the decision, I, I have made the decision that I'd like to remain a testing site, I think it's, it's valuable, it lends a little bit of prestige, I think, to the school, but that means that we have to find a new tester, and it's gotta be somebody extremely organized with an educational background. We're going to, uh, we're, we're going to check out retired teachers, of which the last two have been a retired guidance counselor and retired teacher, and, um, we're gonna try to reach out into that population, but also across the district to see who might be interested. It's not a real, uh, you don't earn a lot of money, but it's, it's a handy supplemental paycheck, and I've gone ahead, I've, I figured the board would want to remain a, a testing site, so that's where we're going with it.
Does the, um, college board or educational testing system pay the bill for this person? Or do we pay the bill for this person?
Uh, no, they, uh, they are, Jay, help me. Do you know, on the S A Ts? No? That's a great question.
They must pay.
They, they have to kick back because it's an expensive test.
Exactly.
I'm sure they're the ones that write the check, but, that's a great question.
Well, I mean, is this person an employee of the district, or not?
Well, we've always thought of him as an employee of the district, but we don't know who writes the check, so...
I mean, he's still, we would still have supervisory roles, as we did in the last, I don't know how...
It's nothing I've ever seen come through. No.
So I've never seen a line item for...
I don't think so. It's gotta be through the budget.
No, we've, we've got the testing line, but it's not for that stuff.
No. How many times is the test offered here?
S A Ts usually offered once a semester, and A C T, about the same, yeah, so, I think there's two shots a semester of testing, and, I'm not sure about others, and they're staggered throughout the state, so if you have a, if you have a conflict with the weekend of the state wrestling tournament, there'll be one in another place, another part of the state, another week, so, and we've sort of served as one of those, uh, catchalls because of the timing of our tests, we seem to get a lot of kids from New York and, and Burlington area and things like that, so...
I do have one other, um, on, on the 21st, which is, uh, happens to be Martin Luther King Day, it's a non-student day, it's an in-service day. Uh, for us, it's a turnaround day for the high school, and since we don't have, in the middle school, we don't have a turnaround phenomenon, it's a, um, a middle school staff development day. Um, as we often try to do, we're gonna tap into, uh, community resources, in the past we've used the Maritime Museum as a site, or we've used the, uh, Folk Life Museum and Middlebury, and this time we're going to be at the new center at Roqueby, uh, for at least the morning portion of that, we will, um, work with them for at least a couple of hours, but then use the site for our own, you know, continuing what we need to do for ourselves. So I just wanted you to know, we're making use of community resources, and it's a nice relationship, we haven't tapped into the Roqueby in the past, it's about a town.
Thank you. Just a couple things, I have a public comment, we're at the photocopier. Um, I just wanted all of you to know, Ed didn't mention that there's a curriculum night that was put together for this week, for the eighth grade, ninth, tenth, and eleventh grade, um, where all the, either department heads or a representative from each department will be here in the library to talk to parents and students about curriculum and help them pick and choose classes to sign up for, or anything else you wanna add to that? I don't, Jay sort of helps organize that, too, so, um, that's this week, and, um, I don't, I wanted to make you guys all aware of something that I, um, my kids came home the other day, and someone has set up a Facebook page called B U H S Compliments, and the, the day that they came home to tell me, it's like these random people complimenting each other's students on things. And that night, I happened to be watching the news, and they had a whole news story about C V U compliments, and it was this whole thing about C V U doing this exact same thing, but anyway, I thought I would let all of you know that it's, exists, and it's a really, seems like a really positive thing that somebody has started, it's anonymous, anonymous, I don't know if you guys can speak to that?
Yeah, completely anonymous, um, I don't e- I don't even know who it's...
No one knows really who said that.
No one knows.
Same at C V U, it's an anonymous setup kind of thing.
Um, basically what it is, is anyone can just, uh, send a private message, um, saying who they wanna compliment, and then just saying it, and it's posted on, on, anonymously, not even saying who it's from, just, uh, who it's to, it's really nice.
I thought you guys wanted to know. Thank you. Tom?
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Wanna let you know that, um, prior to this evening, Addison, Ferrisburg, and B U S have all adopted their budgets for the coming year, so they're well through the process, and hopefully we'll complete ours tonight. Um, just a couple of things, um, tomorrow I'm going to participate in the Humanities Roundtable Presentation, those are, um, papers that, uh, seniors have done in the Humanities class, Becca Coffey and Michael Thomas's class, and, um, judge those, and then on the 22nd, I'm going to the other end of the continuum to, uh, a board meeting for the Evergreen Preschool, discuss with them, um, the funding for preschool students. And you may have noted, if you heard or read the governor's speech, he's putting a lot of emphasis behind early, hopefully, that's all.
Alright, thank you. Kathy?
Um, I just wanted to make the board aware that, um, you may have seen the article in the paper about the, the solar project that Ferrisburg might be participating in, and they've named the high school as one of the beneficiaries of that project, so we could see some savings on our electricity bill if they go ahead with that, um, investment. And I, I think Virgens is also looking at, um, also participating in their own solar, um, project, there's a name for it, I can't think of it, but, um, so, and they might identify the high school as a part beneficiary, and I think also the elementary school, so we could be sa- seeing some savings in our electricity bill.
That's great. Good. Okay.
Um, at the Hannaford Career Center this, uh, month, we finished up the N I S C five-year visit preparation, um, knowing the, the history of N I S C at Virgens, I asked the question, why? Why are we doing this? Um, the response was that it, uh, it provides a, a form of introspection, introspection, um, and that was the only reason that the Hannaford was, was doing the, the certification, um, effort. I, I questioned, you know, whether that could be done, you know, other ways, without the same amount of effort and expense, um, but really wasn't much of a conversation after that, so... So, uh, just wanna, I thought you'd, you'd find that interesting. We, uh, announced our tuition, unfortunately, the tuition is, uh, is the highest in the state, but, um, with that, we also feel that, uh, the services that are being provided are probably the best in the state, so...
How much was that, Chris?
Uh, seventeen and change, yeah. And, you know, I, it's the first time I've seen, uh, tuition, seventeen three thirty. Um, the tuition there is, is split up differently, uh, and I asked about, you know, the secondary seventh through twelfth grade allowance tuition being fifteen six seventy-seven, and the announced tuition being seventeen three thirty, well, from my past experience, that would be danger, uh, and I guess technical centers aren't subject to the same kind of scrutiny as, as high schools send, uh, elementary schools are. So, um, that's what it's gonna be, it's split between, um, seventy-seven fifty-six from the state, and, uh, the districts pay ninety-five seventy-four. So, answer your question? Okay. Uh, we also had a presentation from the STEM Academy, uh, Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics, um, that was very interesting, and, um, part of the report for this past month was, uh, an emergency evacuation on the 21st of December, and, um, I guess, a lot of, uh, not a lot, but two emergency, or two electrical power, um, poles went down, and so they experienced the end of the world in their own north campus and had to evacuate, so, uh, they've proven that their emergency evacuation plan works, so, um, that happened on December 21st. That's all I have.
Okay. Um, I don't have much of a G R N report because they've just started, um, back in session last week, but the, in preparation for the new session, um, the report that V S B A and V P A and V S A put out, um, just talks about that, um, Governor Shumlin has, um, appointed Armando Villasaka as the first, um, Secretary of Education for a one-year position, and then he may open it up to global candidates, but that he, um, at least for the first year, he's doing that. The other thing that we'll hear about later from Tom is that effective next school year, the school choice is no longer by region, it's by state. And so we currently are in a region with Mount Abe and Middlebury, but we now have to open it up to the entire state, and Tom, I know we'll be talking about that later. And just a couple things to watch for as the new, um, you know, as the new, uh, session gets underway, um, as Tom said, you know, the governor is definitely going to be taking an expansive look at education, um, I think it's a very important that we pay attention to the things he comes up with, um, I think it's great that he's doing it, but I get a little concerned when it, that's a huge agenda, um, and I'm not sure that I personally always agree that with the things that he comes up with. So some things that, um, they're looking at is talking more about concussions and head injuries, and safety in athletics, uh, freedom of expression within the public schools, the increase of the voting requirement for school budgets, um, school property being more available to community members, and agency fee, so those are a few things just to watch for.
Does the, um, rest of the board get those?
Do you all, yeah, do you all get them?
I do.
Alright, business matters. Need a motion to approve bills?
Um, in the amount of three hundred forty-four thousand nine hundred six dollars and ninety-two cents. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Yeah. Um, this is, um, this one, I wasn't quite sure, um, do you want me to bring it over there? Sure. That's alright.
While they're examining the bills, Chris, the last piece that you reported out, who was promoting those five areas?
Um... These are all coming out of the Senate.
I mean, it actually says who, it says the senators.
Oh, okay, these are, alright, fine, the Senate bills, okay, 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 okay.
Yes, and they're things that, some of them were talked about last year, like agency fee was definitely one that they talked about.
Right, right.
Um, and they're just trying to bring them back and hopefully get them passed this year. Do you get that, though? Do you get that in your email?
I probably do, yes.
We're working on this.
No, that's okay, I was just, um, I was keeping up with the different things that I, I, I missed.
I don't think I said that it was the Senate, but it's definitely, that it's definitely coming from the legislature.
Well, actually, you know, actually, while they're doing that, um, I'm, I'll just jump down to other, the one thing that I wanted to talk about briefly is, first of all, to say thank you to all of you who worked so hard on this pamphlet, and I know it went back and forth, there are a lot of people, I don't even know who all was involved, I guiltily will say that I was not even in the country, and, so, you all did a great job, and it looks really nice. Um, but I was just wondering if, in those conversations, you, um, I mean, I know it's our responsibility to do the info night, and I'm not asking that, but I'm just wondering if in those conversations and those meetings, it came up about the informational night, and, and I know that it says that there's a tour, which is great. You mean in terms of like having people here on hand, Ted? Yeah, and in terms of, of how to, I wa- I missed the first one. Yeah. And I, you know, just haven't been a part of it, and it is the board's responsibility to do that info night, but I figure if you were all talking about, and I don't know what board members may have been there. Yeah, um, well, Neil was there, and Lori came at different points, and, I mean, we, we mostly talked about how we could divide and conquer, like... So get it out? By counties, so like Peter went to Addison and has gone, um, Jay has gone to several groups, I went to the school board meeting last week in Ferrisburg, and Lori's going to the S L board, and the P T O meeting in Ferrisburg's tomorrow, too, which I was gonna go to, so...
So that's more where you're focusing?
That's kinda where we, that was where we started, um, and then I think we talked about, I think a phone campaign is something that we could definitely pull off, and we talked about doing that. We haven't solidified... Yep. How it's gonna work, but, um...
Yeah, we, we were hoping that the things could get mailed out first, so that everyone's received the brochure, um, at least at home, so they have something to refer to when calls made, if we're going door to door, that kind of thing.
And then I'm working on trying to, um, get the group to write a letter to the paper, um, and, from there, it's, um, then the next step was just probably being here to, like, we've gone to some events, we set up the boards at the Mount Abe game, and Peter were there, I was there, Nancy was there, Kathy was there, so we just passed up our shores, and, so it's many of those kinds of things that we can try and organize between now, February 5th, too, which curriculum night we're gonna set up, which is Wednesday night, we'll be here to, that should be a, I mean, we're kinda, I mean, not necessarily preaching to the choir, but we are talking to the school community there, so it's more tricky getting out. Right.
The fact that you're going to the elementary schools, I think is great, and I just wanna go with Chris said with the thank yous, because I was involved in your, in early meetings, but then not in the subsequent couple.
Yeah, it's been, you know, people coming and going, but it's been good, yeah, yeah. So, I think that's where we're at now. So what about signs? People's signs, red, steeple signs, I know we talked about that. Yeah. We talked about, well, we were thinking of stickers and signs, but we sort of shifted the focus on the brochure, we certainly could talk about printing some signs up at this point, that might be the next step, just to have some visual presence in town and... As people drive around, yeah, I think that's... The tricky part was like, oh, how are we gonna pay for that? You know, are we all pitching in our own money, or, you know, like, so... Addison has supposed to have...
Yeah, they put it on their, on their street sign.
Oh, they did? Oh, that's awesome.
Two weeks, two weeks ago, they put it out, and there are flyers at both Wags and, uh, the Four Corners stores, and I don't know if there are in Ferrisburg.
Yeah, so that's, I wanted to get some more copies to spread it in Ferrisburg, and then if anybody wants any copies, we can certainly get them to whoever to disseminate them out in the world, that's, that's the... I mean, how much are signs? I don't know, but we'll, I'll, I'll, I'll look into that. Look into that and let me know. It can't be super expensive. And while we're, I just, we'll go back to that real quickly, so while we're on that, Kathy, are you planning to be at the information meeting? Yes. Well, I just, you know, I mean...
Yeah, that's the 31st, right?
Yes.
Yes, okay, okay.
And I can meet with you prior to that.
Mm-hmm, and the architects will be here, the engineers, all, they're all going to be here.
Oh, they will?
Yes.
Okay, that'll mean there'll be more technical response than there was at the first one.
So if we do just kind of an overall, kinda going over the pamphlet, basically with the, or do we, we have the slides show as well?
We will have, we still have that PowerPoint.
We'll do the PowerPoint, maybe?
That we can modify a little bit, and, you know, I, I think a visual is important, you know, show the people, the kitchen, the auditorium, the bleachers, I mean, I think that's important.
Okay. Alright, so maybe... Is it worth putting those boards up, like, permanently from here on out in the school somewhere, so even if the students sing them, like, they may go home and ta- I, I don't know, or can we take them to the library, or, I don't, some ideas, so...
Sure, any of that.
Yeah. Why not put one in the library? Well, it also can reach people that wouldn't, you know, be here, the library's a great place, if, if, sure, they'd love it. Okay, alright. And if you need more... No, I, I assume, were you talking about the Bixby Library? I was.
Yeah, I mean, I think that would be great.
Yeah, I mean, I think that would be great.
And if you need more boards to be made, I can have the architect do that.
Okay. I know those, the original boards are not up, they don't necessarily correspond with this, do you think that matters so much, or?
Well, somebody that knows what they're looking at might, I'll call and see if they can get some new boards made up. I mean, Colin lives in Ridport, so it's on his way home, so it certainly.
And then I can, I, I'll make the contact to the Bixby just to see if we can get permission to do that and put theirs out.
Okay, so otherwise, that night, I mean, is everyone planning to be here? Okay, so just that night, we'll just, you know, have a, I mean, six o'clock tour? Who's gonna do the tour? I mean, do we have, like, our, like, would Colin be doing the tour? I could.
Who gave the tour before?
Nobody showed up for the tour last time.
Or do you want, nobody's.
Well, they all came for the meeting, but they didn't come to the tour.
Okay.
I mean, we offered that tour four different times, and, you know, got.
I mean, I don't know if it makes sense, you know, have Pete available to talk to anyone about the, you know, the fields, and have Sue and Karen here to talk about the auditorium, and have them stay in the auditorium.
I would think so, yeah.
You know?
Yeah, we could have stations, so then.
Okay.
I think that would be interesting, if you had a station set up.
Because some people might think, oh, I don't really care about the kitchen, and it needs to be done, but I'm concerned about what you're trying to do in the auditorium. You know, so they might not go through the whole tour or something.
And my experience, you know, some of the events that we did have that people came to, they're interested in looking at the plans, and they wanna know exactly, you know, what is planned.
Okay. So if we went through that quick PowerPoint and had the plans out.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay, all right.
I think the PowerPoint could be shortened considerably and rely more on this and the question and answer, as opposed to trying to gut it through all the slides.
Okay.
That's sort of like feedback from the last couple.
Okay, all right.
You should let us know if you'd like us to do anything specific at that, or whether you want it to come from the public. I mean, at least one of us will be there.
Yeah, I mean, maybe you could be in the, I mean, one of you could be in the kitchen or in, you know, in a station.
Sure.
You know, so that, so that, I mean, maybe somebody, we're gonna lead the tour all the way through, but maybe it's gonna be that somebody needs to be at places in case people just show up.
Yeah.
You know?
We'll put Pete in the gym with the bleachers.
Right.
And then you'll have the, the rest of the stuff.
Is it already a vibrant and somebody professional in terms of the field?
Sure.
Cause that's, everybody keeps, you know, there's a lot of misinformation about that.
Yeah, yeah, no, that would be great. And so we'll come up, maybe Kathy, you and I can talk, and we'll come up sort of with an agenda or a plan, just so it's, we feel like it's very organized and.
Yeah, cause I feel like that if I showed up to something like that and came in, I would not feel comfortable just wandering around the building unless someone told me that I could go here or go there.
Right, right. Well, and we'll see how that works, but I just think having somebody in the stations would be helpful, even if, you know, we're leading them around, and then, you know, Pete talks in the gym, and somebody talks in.
And there's professionals that we could need.
Right.
Yep.
And then if that, cause if that, if a lot of people go to that, then by the time you get in here and we talk about, okay, now, here it is on paper.
Yep.
I think that would be good.
And if you want, I can email the friends of the bond group and say, you know, who's gonna be here and need anybody's help in that group, do whatever, just.
Okay, great. Well, the more positive people, the better.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, sorry, back to the bills. Questions?
Okay, Kathy's gonna email us all, there's just a, it's in, they're all like separate packets, and you have to sign on each one of these stickies, and you know, your usual way of signing your name and then date it, please. But on the second packet.
Please.
Please. Is that there's a discrepancy, the control, the control total is act, it's the correct amount at the top on the face of the page, but it's not actually the right amount at the bottom of the page. There's a little indication of what the difference is. So Kathy assumes or is assuming that it's a credit.
It's a credit.
But it doesn't, it's not reflected in this. So she's gonna find out what it is and then email everybody. So is everybody okay?
Yep.
Okay.
So all those in favor?
Aye.
Most? Motion carried. Okay, budget development.
So a copy of the latest rendition is making its way around. There's a cover sheet to the actual budget, and it provides the history since the 12th of November up through tonight, and a couple of changes that were made that most affected where we were. That includes healthcare, I think I told you I had budgeted at 15% from the get-go. I modified it to reflect 13 and a half, which is closer to where we're likely to come out, at least according to the info we've gotten recently. We were also, as a district, identified as a 0% increase in our dental insurance, so that saved us some money there as well. In the midst of all that, you can see the health changes and dental primarily, but there are some areas where we made some modifications in order to get a budget that was just under the 6% increase. And if you look at the very last page, which I'm sure you've already done, you'll note that this is a proposed budget increase of $535,670, or 5.98%.
So special services, though, is still quite high.
It is. We made some major changes.
I mean, that's a, that's a good.
That's been reduced by $242,000.
But that's almost 3% of that increase. So I think that's really important to note.
If you look at the first two lines, in that summary at the very end.
Yeah.
That is about 85% of the budget, those two lines.
Right.
The health and the special education.
Majority of staff is in those programs, and more expensive educational programs included there. You'll note that we reduced that section of the budget from the original expectation of by about a quarter million dollars. The other thing I would point out is, and I think I mentioned this when we spoke last time, is that it's a little risky in terms of building operation and maintenance to make the modifications that are proposed, but we're betting on a successful outcome to the bond. And I guess we'll have to make some other changes if that doesn't happen.
Right. Which we won't be able to do in time to warn this part.
So the total modifications for the process has been just about a half a million dollars.
Reduction from the initial starting point.
From the initial proposal, well, actually, since 12/10, $535,000 or 5.98%. And just so that you know, Ferrisburg's budget is just under 5%. VUES is about, is at 4.5%. Addison Central School is at a negative 4%. And that's primarily because of the downsized of the program. The expectation, who was I talking to? At least as far as the new Secretary of Education is concerned, is that although they had initially talked about a 2% or 2.5% increase, that was what the governor had put out in his annual letter, they're anticipating that things are gonna be more around the neighborhood 4% or 5%, so we're not all that far off the mark.
Tom, do you have a question?
Sure.
Or may I? The 202,500 tuition increase over the past year, that's because of more individuals or more services to the same number?
In special ed?
Yeah. More services to the same individuals? 200,000.
So I guess I will proceed back from the state, $1.2 million of that special ed.
Of the 1.9?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
What, what code is that, the special ed side? So if I wanna find it in the paper.
1200.
Does anyone have other questions? Are you still looking?
I've got a couple of things coming around, so we'll go with the budget. The first page.
This is tuitioning students, basically.
Yeah.
Basically, tuitioning students to other schools, right?
Or other places.
Yeah, that's a, that's a huge jump with, you know, increasing FTE, people. And do we know what those special services are, or are they anything unusual, or why would they be so expensive?
I think basically what you're gonna see, and Peter has some more information on one of the schools than I do, but we pay tuition at DO, we pay tuition at the parent-child center, I don't know if that's properly called tuition, and Bellkate up in Williston, I think it is now, for extremely difficult, behaviorally challenged students. And, and at one point, we're busing like three kids to Burlington every day, which is astronomically expensive.
Yeah.
And then, in addition, we also have, we reserve three slots at Champlain Valley Academy, CVA, for behavior issues that aren't quite, that don't quite mount up to Bellkate. And so we're running over those three right now in the placement, so that means they're kinda, that's coming out of our pocket as well. That's right, Kathy, we're up over three, right?
I think so.
Yeah.
Three or four.
Four, four and a half. So all those things are extremely expensive. And Kurt, one of the things I think we found is that they put in the educational support team process about 15 years ago to try to reduce the numbers of special ed. And we put in the RTI and the PBIS process, which grade level teams are looking at every kid that's struggling.
Yep.
And instead of reducing special ed, I think because we're staring at all the kids who are having problems, we're actually had a little bit of a rise in special ed referrals for high school almost every single year in the last five years. That's, I think it's because we're look, it's one of those self-fulfilling prophecies that if you stare at it long enough, you find something.
Or you see something, yeah.
So it's a combination of all those things, I think.
And in addition, as part of that scrutiny, and a little bit of shift in perspective, we're recognizing that if we, the last place to catch non-readers is middle school, and that if they're not reading by the time they leave middle school, then we better take some other approach to get them to get information. We don't have a certified reading position in the building, and so that has called for some contract work and an out-of-district placement for a student this year. So, and that, the out-of-district placement is $75,000. And that's weighed against the cost of not, of not teaching someone to read. So middle school has become, in addition to looking at middle school as sort of an extended, extended time in middle school, we have this increased load this year of looking at reading instruction, providing additional stuff.
So what I'm looking at is, is, you know, it seems like we're cutting services that we provide and contracting more.
I don't know if we're cutting.
I don't know what's cutting.
Well, the faculty is cut by 20,000, the instructional assistants are cut by 27,000. I mean, am I reading it incorrectly, or?
Well, I don't know that it's a decision to do one or the other, it's what serves the child best.
Yeah.
And it could be that the students that are moving on have different needs than the students that are coming in.
I'm just, I'm not questioning the, the fact that you're doing it, I'm just trying to understand. Is it, is it, we're cutting services that we provide and instead contracting them out?
It, it could be a totally different need. A student could, a student with a particular disability could be being served by a one-on-one paraprofessional in this building. That student moves on, we, maybe, if a student moves on, we don't need to provide that service for that student.
Right.
But it's not a reading service, and coincidentally, we have a particular reading need. So while the two are happening simultaneously, it, it isn't as if we're not.
They're not dependent on each other.
Yeah, it's not a one for one.
Right.
I understand. But it sounds like the services that we provide are becoming less in this instance.
Certainly in this, in this year.
Whether we can provide it or not, I'm not questioning that, or I'm not, and I'm not questioning whether it's appropriate or not, I'm just trying to understand it.
And like, when you see the faculty shrinkage on that line.
Yeah.
That's salary, that's not people.
Yeah.
It's because we hired a more or less high-earning teacher for a slot.
Okay.
And so, you know, some of those are, and I'm sure there has to be an instructional assistant going down the tube somewhere with negative 27, but I'm not privy to that.
Okay.
So there are some, not illusions, but there are some things that need explaining there. But in general, I think you're right.
Certainly for this year.
Okay. Thank you.
So what I've passed out, the sheet that's very, has very small letters, numbers, three year, three prior year's comparisons, this will go in the annual report, and this is the computation of the tax rate. I just would like to walk you through it. Line one is the budget that Tom has passed out, $9,499,838. Let's see, comes down, line four, that is our obligation to the Hannaford Career Center. So part, this is, partly will be raised, will all be raised by taxes, but, so that's 739,551, which really was only about $800 higher than the prior year's number. That, the numbers for the prior year are included in, in line one. For the Hannaford. For Hannaford, right, yeah, and I can't.
That's a separate vote.
Yes, it's a separate vote, you vote on Hannaford's budget. You don't vote on that number exactly, you vote on the whole Hannaford's entire budget, but this is our allocation. So I can't change any of the numbers in the prior years, I can only change the numbers in the current year, or I would've split those numbers out. So then revenues, line nine, I'm estimating to be $1,862,757, based on prior year revenues, which comes down to our education spending on line 12, $8,376,632. Our equalized pupils, 621.14 on line 13, so that's a number that I receive from the state with the waiting for students that have, that are English language learners, there's a waiting for special ed, a waiting for Medicaid, free and reduced lunch. So then the cost, so that's divided, line 12 is divided by line 13 to get the education spending per equalized pupils. It's just 13,485,90, which you'll see is up almost, up really about $1,000 from the prior year.
Kathy, can I ask a question there?
Mm-hmm.
But so clarification, the 12,442 from the prior year did not contain the Hannaford number.
It did, the Hannaford number in the prior years is included in box one. Cause if you look at the budget that we're looking at, our prior year budget was $8,964,168. So the Hannaford number is include, it's included in box one in the prior years.
So when they do the computation in the second question and all that, are they looking at the increase that includes or does not include the Hannaford?
They do, because we have to raise taxes to pay for that.
But that seems a little unfair to our district, well, I know it's not in your control. But that's unfair to our district when that vote, that budget is voted separately.
Yes.
And yet, yet the computation affects our second question calculation, right? I'm not being clear.
So I have, I have already been told that this is our bill to Hannaford next year, the 739,551.
Right, understood.
So all the towns that go to Hannaford vote on Hannaford's budget separately. So I'm sorry, I guess I don't understand your question.
Exactly, so when I look at, at calculating the divided question, question, which is, you know, 13,485 and a thousand dollar increase makes me feel like we might be getting too close.
We're not.
We're not?
No.
All right, well, that's good. But it still feels like our numbers are being held hostage, not held hostage, but are tied to the Hannaford's budget, when the Hannaford's budget is actually voted completely separately from ours in this calculation. So it makes citizens, it might make a citizen think that we're spending a lot more money than we are, or that, that, you know, we're asking them for.
Mm-hmm.
Anyway.
Yeah, I can see that.
No second question in here, though? No second question?
No second question.
Okay.
No. And the Hannaford ballot question is their entire budget, so you're right, it might make someone think that it's more than it is.
All right, sorry for that.
Okay, so, you'll see the tiny numbers above box seventeen where it says threshold equals fifteen, four fifty-six. So that's the threshold that if we were spending above that amount, we would be in the penalty or the excess spending. And so, we're not, we don't have to worry about that. So then, we come down to line nineteen, and this is the percentage, one hundred and fifty-one, two point two seventy-two, that we're, our per pupil spending is over the base amount of eight thousand, nine fifteen. So then, our tax rate is the hundred and fifty-one percent times point nine-two to give a dollar point thirty-nine, one seven, is our tax rate for the high school. And you'll, we can compare that to the prior year's rate of a dollar twenty-six, nine four. So that is up thirteen cents or so, twelve and a half cents. And then down below, the next section tells the percentage of high school students for each town. And you'll see, with the exception of Addison, which is almost at sixty percent, the other four districts are about at fifty percent. So, you know, for the four, for four towns, their tax will, you know, will be half of, about half of that rate. And for Addison, it will be about sixty percent. So then, on the second sheet that I handed out, this also will be in the annual report, and this is the prorated rate for each town based on the percent of equalized pupils. And then, so you'll see, and I have in there for fiscal year thirteen, and then I have the increase in the rate. And I've not considered CLA anywhere in, in these calculations. So you'll see it's about an eight, an eight to nine cent increase in the five towns. So looking at Addison, for example, they have eighty-seven point seven seven equalized pupils in K through six, and a hundred and twenty-six point twenty-four equalized pupils here at the high school. And so then, you know, there's a percent of the total, and then that is the percent that's applied to the two school rates to get to the total rate for Addison.
So the increase, the cent increase is per hundred or per thousand dollars value on the whole?
This is per thousand.
So, we're looking at a ninety-dollar increase annually for, for Gens?
For Gens, per, yes.
Is that, is that usual, the fifty-fifty split?
No, you'll, if you look at the prior year column, for fiscal year thirteen, you know, it's really, it was really about sixty-five percent, with Addison being higher, seventy-two percent.
And that, so fifty-eight, ninety-nine, forty-one, so these are the, the percentage of high school students in each town.
Yes.
That's, that doesn't make, it, it looks weird to me.
I think it's a weird way to compute, to figure it out. It's the, it's the percentage of the total students within the town-
Within the town.
Going to these schools.
Yes.
And I always thought of it the opposite, the percentage of the high school students that come from Waltham, is what I think should mean-
Yeah, because it doesn't total up to a hundred percent.
Exactly.
Right.
Looking at it, blows my mind sometimes.
So this, this goes to a hundred percent.
Because, because all five, all five towns do not wholly support the budget of the high school.
Right.
So we rely on education aid, so, so with this calculation, you know, it doesn't consider the grand lists of all the towns. I mean, the CLA equalizes the grand list statewide.
Right.
And where are the CLA numbers at right now? I mean, I think all the towns are pretty much current, right?
I think so, Pantan, I'm just re-appraised, so-
Is everybody over a hundred percent, or not?
Let me look. Addison's at one-twelve, Ferrisburg is a hundred point four, Pantan is ninety-six point seven, Virgens is one oh four point two, and Waltham is at ninety-four point eight. So all, about around a hundred. Virgens is appealing, and Ferrisburg always appeals, I haven't heard that they are specifically-
Appealing their rate?
Appealing, they think that there is a calculation error made.
Oh, so they want it to be higher, obviously.
And they've got some documents to prove it, so they think the property was misclassified. Okay.
So, we're at six percent, and the other schools are between four and five for our district.
Well, Addison is negative four.
Oh, yeah, I don't know what to say about that. And what I think I'm hearing you say is we need everything that's in this budget.
Again, just as last year, the increases are all in salary and benefits. And we've, we've pruned back, as you can see on the front page of the, of the cover page. You know, we took, you know, two thousand out of supplies, fourteen hundred out of texts, another two thousand out of texts, another thousand out of texts, another seven hundred out of supplies, and, you know, et cetera.
Yeah, it's nickels and dimes.
It's, we're nickel and diming, our, our, the budget that we have some say in is only, like, it's less than ten percent. So when we make a major cut to our less than ten percent, it really doesn't budge, doesn't move the needle very far on the, on the, on the big budget. And so, it's, it's getting more and more that we have very little, and we don't, and frankly, we don't have anything left to give. And we've been cutting, ever since I've been working here, we've cut budgets. And, and we've cut the book budgets so drastically that, you know, luckily, we're not using as many books, because we're using more computer-based instruction, but still, it's, something's gotta give eventually, because we're really at rock bottom. And we're still trying to be a comprehensive high school, which is gonna be one of the issues regarding school choice. You know, do we wanna remain a comprehensive high school so that we're competing for kids from North Ferrisburg, or maybe even South Charlotte? I mean, that's the kind of questions we have to ask ourselves as we look at these budgets, and we look at the bond issues, so.
Sure, and, and I don't think the board has asked you to trim, I know that I'm-
No.
I always support the program budget that, you know, you need, that's what I always argue for with everyone. It's just, I wanna be able to explain when asked, you know, that health insurance is costing this, it's the first time in three years there's been an increase, and we're seeing a significant increase in our special education. So are those really the major drivers?
Well, and the contractual salaries.
Well, yeah, no, but that's, that's almost, that's sort of a given, you know, but you say salary and benefits are going up, but in the last couple of years, benefits didn't really go up.
Yeah.
You know, they kind of fluxed with, with, with changes in family situations. But now, there's, you know, thirteen and a half percent increase in the premium.
I mean, you're talking about more than, more than three percent increase in special education. If you didn't have that there, we would be down to, you know-
Right.
Half of what we're asking.
And that's what I wanna be able to present.
Pretty much to half of what it is, and that's the way to present it, I think.
And that's what we need to tell the citizens, and that's, you know, that kind of comes and goes.
Right.
Kathy, what was the, the revenue you estimated for reimbursement for special ed?
I think it was one point two.
One point two, and we got a one point nine budget, so seven hundred thousand is-
Right.
And so, we can explain that.
It's costing us nine cents, basically.
And it's important to note that the students for which we spend more than fifty thousand dollars on, our reimbursement is ninety percent over fifty thousand dollars. So it's, you know, those don't go into the formula where we only get fifty-six percent back. And we do receive a higher reimbursement for those.
So on extraordinary expenditures, the students are still costing us almost, well, at least five times what a, what a regular ed student costs for extraordinary expenditure kids. I mean, just to make it clear, that, yeah, we do get extraordinary reimbursement, but yet, even if you look at it, ninety percent, that sends it up somewhere in the vicinity of, you know, five-
It's over sixty thousand.
It's over sixty thousand, so we're paying five times what we're paying for a regular ed student. And, and we are ethically obligated to educate every single child that walks through our door. So it's, it's really kind of a procrastinian bed.
Up to the age of twenty-one, or up to the age of twenty-two, if they haven't graduated.
Right. But the other thing that's hard is we might get that million two back, but it doesn't reflect, it's still, the increase is still reflected here. That's true. And that's what's hard to explain to the public as well.
Does this one you netted out actually?
Right.
That doesn't show.
Right, that doesn't show here. People look at the six percent increase, that's all they look at.
Right, but they'll also, I mean, in this instance, they're also gonna be looking at the cents increase, the ninety bucks per hundred thousand, or the eighty bucks per hundred thousand, which we've maintained it below in prior years. And, you know, I understand that, I'm not, I'm not advocating that we reduce it, but you need to understand and explain exactly what's going on.
And even if we maintain it below, they don't always realize that we did that because their taxes may have still gone up.
Right, well, yeah, that's absolutely true.
They're getting, they're getting charged more, that we're spending more. Lots of people, oh, the rates have gone up every year for the last five years, what are you guys doing? And I'm like, we didn't spend more, you know, and they, they can't realize it because, especially if they're making under the ninety-seven thousand dollars a year, and they get a raise, well, their taxes are going up. But they're gonna assume that we spent more, and it was because of something we did, not because of something in their own life that they had them control over.
And we did not set aside money to repair the roof, because we were keeping costs, other costs.
Oh, I know, understood, I, yeah.
I know you get it.
Kathy, can, just so I have the numbers written down, do you kind of, can you ballpark the, what the thirteen and a half percent means in terms of a total increase in the budget? Because it's all kind of baked into all the individual sheets, but in aggregate?
Close your eyes.
Or should I just go through and add it up for myself? How mu, the health, the health premium increase of thirteen and a half percent? You know, what is that proportion of the total budget? Of the, of the six percent we're asking for, three percent is special ed, fixed hard costs.
Well, I know, I know health insurance is a million dollars of the budget in total, it's a million dollars.
So, and it was last year proportionally, that's what I'm getting at, what's, I mean, it's ten percent of the budget.
Last year was about thirteen and a half percent less.
Okay, I'll work, I'll figure it out.
I mean, if you want something like that for your annual meeting, we can work on something like that to break down the tax, the tax increase and the components.
And I wanna see in the, reflected when the Addison Independent runs the budget numbers, which are gonna look higher than every other district, Middlebury, Mount Abbe, which is aiming at two, you know, and that's causing some problems.
Ask where Mount Abbe was last year. Or Middlebury.
Well, no, no, fair enough, but I don't know, so.
Can I ask a quick question? I'm just curious why the math health insurance is fifteen thousand, and all the others are like five hundred, seven hundred.
The decrease right on the front page.
On the front page? If you look at math, this is fifteen thousand, which is high compared to all the others.
Part of that is because we had Tom Heller in that line before, and moved him, he's under technology now.
Okay, anything more on the budget? Okay, I need a motion to approve.
Still moved.
Still moved. For a second.
And we have a second in the amount of?
Nine million, four hundred, ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred, thirty-eight.
Thank you. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Did you get all that, Tommy Lee?
There's gonna be a quiz on it next time.
Well, the answer is one point three percent.
It's taking me like six years.
I know Tommy Lee would appreciate that, because he's on the math page.
Okay, we have to-
Congratulations.
The math meet happens, they should put some of these computations in the math meet, that'd be nice.
And then they can come explain it to us. So we also need to adopt the warning for the budget, and as well as the information reading, correct? Can we do that all at once? We should probably separate it. Okay, so I need a motion to approve the warning for-
Budget.
For the budget, which we just adopted.
Still moved.
Is there any discussion? Or, wait, I need a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Signature page is coming around.
Okay, and then I also, what's the next one, the motion for the-
The annual meeting?
For the annual meeting to be held on February twenty-sixth at-
Six thirty.
Six thirty P M. here, with the budget informational meeting following. Need a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone else in favor?
Anybody else?
Anyone else in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, we can all talk and write at the same time?
Yeah, that's my problem.
Do we get the, do we get the time change on here?
It's at six thirty, yeah. Remember, it used to start at eight o'clock.
We warned that last year, so now we're warning the, the annual reports to change, that's good, good.
So, establish the tuition rate.
Oh, we got one more.
Oh, sorry.
The informational meeting.
Oh, now we need to, to-
February twenty-sixth, six thirty P M.
Okay.
So moved.
Motion to approve, second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Can you sign that for me?
Okay, and tuition rate for FY fourteen? I'd like to recommend that we up our tuition rate from nine thousand to nine thousand, five hundred dollars. I have a calculation that I do, that I perform, and the costs are going up. But this is our budget, less special ed, less transportation, debt service, and revenues. So it's just sort of the meat of the budget. Need a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second? Any questions?
Yeah, can I have that number again?
Nine thousand, five hundred. Nine thousand, five hundred dollars. Up from nine thousand. Up from nine thousand.
So that compares to ninety-five, seventy-four was what, what we pay for a local assessment, or the tuition paid by districts to Hannaford.
To Hannaford.
That's what I was wanting to compare.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Budget information planning.
Like I said, we should really explain that clearly when we talk to the Addison Independent.
Right.
Kathy and I are meeting with Andy tomorrow morning.
Okay. Nine.
Nine.
I think just, just the budget, okay. And are we doing a district, is a district doing a flyer with all the budgets? And we can do that same flyer that we, I mean, it's kind of-
Have all the, have all the numbers in it.
Right. I mean, I think with the, with the, with the bond one going out from the high school, I wouldn't wanna get confused, but I think if we did the district one-
I wouldn't want to get confused, but I think if we did the district one, so everybody sees that, all of them.
And that's later in February, anyway.
Yeah.
After the election. Okay. So for the informational meeting, well, actually, we could talk about that at the February meeting, too, because we've got lots of time. So let's all think about questions and ideas that we might want to have. Sometime we've done a PowerPoint, I find it's not really necessary, because you generally don't get that many people, and, you know, if we kind of talk about, here's what it is, here's why, and answer questions, I mean, that's what I've found, that people, as far as that meeting goes, that that works pretty well. Okay? Okay, reimbursement resolution?
With me. So, for the bond project, we are spending money in anticipation of getting repaid by the issuance of a bond, from the proceeds of a bond. So we need a resolution to allow that we are spending in anticipation of receiving a bond. So Paul Giuliani, our bond counsel, wrote this for me, and he's saying that we won't incur more than a million dollars that we would have to be reimbursed by, which, we've already spent ninety-seven thousand dollars in architect's fees, and other clerk of the works fees. So...
Say that again, he's saying that we can do this, but only up to a million dollars?
That, that, that the board's going to incur expenses not to exceed a million dollars before we receive the bond.
Okay, so that's, okay, so that's us saying that we won't spend any more than that in anticipation of receiving...
Of receiving the bond. And, I mean, if we could, we could amend this at a later point in time, if we found that we needed it to be more than a million dollars.
So what you mean by this document is that the bond passes, we know where to go?
Yes.
We begin to spend money on design, we begin to get the clerk of the works.
We've already spent some dollars, yeah.
You know, but I mean, actual...
Yes, yeah, we start to spend some money, and we don't have our bond proceeds yet.
Which we won't have until the early summer.
July. So we'll get it and receive it in July.
So we would ultimately have to do, we would have to do a meeting to do authorization of borrowing in anticipation, right? Or is that what this is?
This is, no, this is authorization to use our general fund monies to pay for expenses that will be covered by, that will be, become reimbursed from the bond at a later point in time.
But is there, once the bond is passed, is there a point, then, like Neil said, that we will have to probably borrow in anticipation of the bond payment?
I mean, it could, it could be that, this passes, and we go out to bid, and we start work in late May, you know, and we'd have to pay a contractor in perhaps June and July.
Well, and if we're taking that money out of the general fund, then we may have to borrow money to pay the general fund.
Right. Okay. Right. But no bank's going to give us a loan without having a positive... Of course.
A bond outcome.
Right, got it.
Right.
It feels to me like we shouldn't borrow a million dollars from our ledger without having a good bond outcome. So that's to say, is there a risk by deferring this until our next meeting, when we'll at least know what the outcome of the vote was? We won't be thirty days out, but...
I don't, no, because we've already, as Kathy said, we've already spent some money.
We've already spent.
So it's a little bit retroactive.
Well, I understand that, and I kind of was concerned about that when I learned previously that we were just kind of sort of doing it.
And this covers, this, my understanding is this covers us for being allowed to do that. So we really need to approve this. And the, we wouldn't spend, I mean, we're done, pretty much, until we get the vote, a positive vote, we're not spending any more money.
Any more money.
Except for what we pay them to come in and assist in the presentation, but that's not...
But I think that's all part of it.
And you can't, you can't go ahead with a loan without having done that.
Right.
Right, no, no, understood, so, but it just, there's a big difference between, you know, a hundred thousand dollars or a little less, and a million, that we're saying we're going to pull out of this.
Well, but he's just saying...
You're saying up to.
Yeah, but he's, it's just saying that we're not allowed to do any more than that, doesn't mean we have to, we're not going to go anywhere near that.
We're not going to go anywhere near it. You know, and we're not on to the next phase of the architect's contract, anyway, we're just in the design phase. You know, the next phase is the generation of bid documents, but, you know, we're not going to go there until we have a positive outcome. I mean, without this resolution, we run the risk of not being able to be repaid from the monies that we're currently spending out of the bond.
Right, I'm just, I understand entirely, I'm just uneasy with, since there's no way we're going to go that far in terms of spending in anticipation.
Well, he just threw, put this number in here, so you wouldn't have to keep on coming back and getting a new one.
And since you said that we could amend it, I mean, would it make sense to, you know, do it for two hundred thousand or something like that?
No, because then we'd, you'd have to go back and amend it. If, if the bond is positive, and we start doing it, we're not getting any bond money until December, next July?
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 Oh, this July?
But there could be, who knows what the expenses could be?
Right, no, I understand that, but I'm just saying, I wouldn't want to take out a credit line...
It's not a credit line.
On a refi that I might be getting for a million...
But it's not, it's not. It's only saying that you can't go above the million dollars. If we only are going to spend a hundred and fifty thousand, that's great, but you, we're not now allowed to go unless we amend it again. So if you amend it to two hundred thousand, that we cannot exceed, and then all of a sudden, May fifteenth, you realize, oh my gosh, we're going to be spending, you know, three hundred thousand. You have to go back and redo this.
I guess what I'm proposing is that we do this for like two hundred thousand dollars, and then, at our next meeting, once we know the outcome, then we boost it to a million. But that way...
But why bother?
Yeah, but...
I don't, I don't, if you're never going to hit the million dollars, it, I mean, it really doesn't matter. It's not like a line of credit, it's not. It's just saying, you can go ahead and use this money in your budget as long as you don't exceed a million, and it was a...
Figure he pulled out of nowhere.
It just seems, it just, yeah, I mean, if it's, if it's the kind of thing where we flexibly make the decision, it just would seem prudent, but that's fine, I'm, I'm good, I'm good, I'm good.
As long as you understand.
Oh, I totally understand.
Okay.
I'm good.
You're being conservative.
And, yeah, just being a little cautious with how the perspective might play. Oh, the, boy, now they're going to borrow a million dollars out of their operating funds to move this thing forward, and we, the citizens, haven't even said yes yet. I'm sure this is how it works everywhere.
We would be at risk, I mean, that money is at risk.
Aye.
Okay.
If we don't sign this.
No, we need to do this, but, you know, we're putting it at risk.
The money's at risk, anyway, if the bond doesn't go ahead, then we're still out at, you know, a hundred thousand dollars. Okay.
Okay, so I need a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second.
Is there any more discussion? Any questions? Everyone comfortable? Ready to vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. It's a full choice.
Actually, as the clerk has to sign this, Neil...
Well, I'm blind, I have questions. My questions are all answered. Concerns duly noted by the minutes.
Someone witness that signature, please?
We have.
Yeah, who's got the, who's got the notary stamp?
There you go.
So, as most of you, I think, are aware, during the last legislative session, they passed a bill calling for statewide public high school choice. In the past, we've had it on a regional basis, in our case, it was with Middlebury and Bristol, and now, the possibility is being expanded statewide. In the interest of time and time, I'm going to give you the bottom line that needs to be in place by February one for our district to begin that process, and then we're going to post all of this information on the website, so that you and anybody else who might have an interest can, can have a good read. So what we're being asked to do is to identify the number of students that we're willing to permit to transfer from Virgens Union High School, and the number of students that we're willing to have transfer in to the high school. The transfer in is the minimum of five percent of a student body, or ten students. That will never exceed, or should not exceed, ten percent, or forty of our students. The maximum number that can be allowed in is another formula that they drew up as part of the process, and given the size of our eight-through-twelve population, we can allow up to four, up to thirty students to transfer in to Virgens Union High School. You know, on first blush, you'd say, great, thirty kids coming in, times how much, but there is no tuition. We send the students out, we retain their ADM in our account, students that transfer in are retained by this, their sending district in terms of ADM.
Money does not follow the student.
Money does not follow the student. We do have a calculation in terms of total capacity, it turns out to about the same number, that forty students, that we have to determine each year. So the number could fluctuate a little bit, it's not going to fluctuate a lot, but in terms of the number of students out and in, it could change slightly each year, we go through this calculation on an annual basis. My recommendation to the board is to do, right now, the minimum, to see how things operate. That means that in addition to, or, in terms of students transferring out, we would set that limit at ten, and the number of students, a maximum that we can allow in at thirty for the two thousand...
And is that per year?
Yeah.
Yes.
It's thirteen, fourteen schools, and that'll change again for the fourteen, fifteen, and so on.
So we let thirty in?
We can let up to thirty in.
But we would only let ten out?
Ten out.
And what happens with, I have not read this all, so I don't know, but what happens with special ed?
It's a good question.
If a special ed student comes here, and it's somebody that, you know, has a hundred thousand dollar tuition, whatever you want to, you know, figure with them.
In, in the literature that we've gotten so far, that's not been addressed. My guess is going to be that if a student comes in, we'll do the, the basic level, and any additional services are going to have to come from the sending district.
That's okay.
I don't think anybody's going to blink at that.
Right, okay. All right, so everyone understand? Do you need a motion to approve?
Just another quick question. So the, the money doesn't follow the student, so then, our ADM values don't change as a result of this?
That's correct.
So even if we, if we brought in students from wherever, for four years, and they came in as, as first-year students all the way through to the end, our ADM would still be our students?
Our students.
One of the things that could potentially, it's not a big one, but if a kid wanted to go to Walden from Williston, previously, and right, even right now, they're paying, there's a kid paying tuition. I think he's from Jericho, and, and he's paying full, you know, our full tuition, but with statewide school choice, that's no longer the case. So we could be faced, I mean, as good a program, as popular a program as Walden is, that may put more pressure on the selection process out there. I could see that happening.
But our students get first choice.
Well, there's something about lottery here that I didn't read, so do they?
There's a lottery.
Or, once it's statewide, I don't think so.
Yes, there is a lottery.
We hold lotteries.
No, first choice. She's, Laurie is asking if our students get first preference.
For Walden?
Yeah, for special programs like that.
I don't think so, I don't think you could. I mean, that's just my opinion, that's not fact.
Well, that's just weird, if the money doesn't follow the student, we're paying the bills. So what's up with that?
It was coming here, isn't it, so like, anything that we do external to this, that seems weird to you?
If we have an enrollment capacity in Walden of twenty, and we have eighteen kids, we have two slots available, the program that they apply for is not Walden, the program they apply for is Virgens Union High School.
So if twenty, twenty Virgens Union High School students want Walden, they go through the same process.
They go through the same process as all the other kids.
I see, okay, so they would, they would, in order to get into Walden, the student from Jericho has to get in here.
Right.
All right. And then they go through, they get treated as one of our kids.
Exactly, exactly, yeah.
And we can't treat them any differently, so if we had twenty-one students here wanting to go in from Virgens, plus the young woman from Jericho, whatever, all right, we couldn't discriminate?
No.
By the same token, if, if our kids wanted to participate in pathways at Mount Abbe, they would have a better opportunity than, that would be the same kind of thing.
Right, 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 understood.
But to that extent, it could be an advantage to our kids.
So the school choice, as it's currently parameterized, really presupposes that there's just kind of going to be this equal mush of people back and forth, and it won't really change anybody's budgets, but we know it's not going to be the case.
I think this is a work in progress.
Governor Shumlin was talking about money following kids, so that's about this.
Well, it's also about the, it's also about the program in which a kid could be duly enrolled, in college and high school, and, and the poison pill that they, the poison pill that the appropriations committee put in to the educational bill for dual enrollment was that the money does follow the kid. So when the kid goes to CCV, our, our ADM monies would follow the kid to CCV and reimburse CCV, and that's what killed dual, dual enrollment, functionally.